Hello, welcome all to the Planning Board Meeting of the Village of Rybrook. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, members of the audience and all of those couple of people that are actually seeing this on video. I don't even know, is our television station? Are we engaged in a, do we have a, are we actually being broadcast somewhere now or not?
Just be grateful that we didn't have a strike.
All right. My name is Rob Goodman. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Board members in attendance tonight are Donald Crum, Matthew Retner, Amy Schoen, and John Grzan. Scott Mendelson and Jeffrey Richmond have been excused for tonight. Also in attendance is our village attorney, Robert Zitt, our superintendent of Public Works, Michael Noack, our village planning consultant from Harte'sian Hannover, Sarah Brown, and always in spirit, Carol Orlando, our board secretary who does everything behind the scenes to make it possible for us to appear tonight. Our first item on the agenda, we don't have any minutes. Are we gonna have, are we gonna have minutes at some point in the future?
Are you asking yourself or you asking us?
No, I'm asking, I've not even been asking you. Ask her.
Are we gonna have what?
Keep, let's keep, try to.
Minutes, minutes.
Minutes.
It's a meeting, minutes.
Yeah. Our first item is 105 Lincoln Avenue. Now you were before the zoning board?
Yes.
And I gather you've finally got the zoning board to approve the variance?
Yeah. Let me just share with you.
Yeah, what, yeah, please.
So the area that you see with the kind of red diagonal lines here and enclosed in a green line, it's hard to see, but that's the area that was removed. So we removed 50 square feet from the outdoor patio and they seem to be happy with that and they approved the application.
Okay, that's fine. And Sarah, we're, there's no planning issues, we're all complete?
We are all complete. We have no outstanding items.
Okay. Do any members of the board have any questions for the applicant?
Nope.
Nope, looking good.
I think a public hearing is still on for this, so we'll have to close.
You'll have to close it, yes.
Yeah, I don't think it was ever, it was opened, I don't think it was ever closed.
You'll have to close it before.
Can I have a motion to second to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Someone please.
Second.
You're designated tonight.
Guys, I'll be your longer.
Our official second is going.
Mr. Grzan.
Yes.
Mr. Crum.
Yes.
Mr. Retner.
Yes.
Ms. Schoen.
Yes.
Chairman Goodman.
Yes.
And Rob, we have a resolution?
Yes. Resolution granting approval of a site plan amendment for property located at 105 Lincoln Avenue. Whereas the applicant has submitted an application seeking approval of an amended site plan for the purposes of constructing a new roof over the front entry and den along with a new slate patio and concrete stairway at a single-family residence located at 105 Lincoln Avenue. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rybrook Planning Board hereby approves the site plan amendment constructing a new roof over the entry and den along with a new slate patio and concrete stairway at the single-family residence located at 105 Lincoln Avenue as more fully set forth in the written resolution dated December 14th, 2023.
Okay. Unless there is any.
No.
Request for a discussion on the resolution, can I have a motion to second to adopt it?
Moved.
Second.
Good, good.
Good night.
We're getting the hang of this.
Good night.
Mr. Grzan.
Yes.
Mr. Crum.
Yes.
Mr. Retner.
Yes.
Ms. Schoen.
Yes.
Chairman Goodman.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Happy holidays to you.
Thank you, same to you.
You too. Appreciate your patience in all of this.
Good luck with the project.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, happy holidays to you as well. Our next item is Nine High Point Circle.
Mr. Chairman, counsel advised me to recuse myself at the last. If you need me, you need me for a quorum?
I think we do need you for a quorum, right?
No, four.
Five.
All four.
Four.
All right, okay.
That's here.
If you need me, I can be, I'll be in the back.
I can't count. All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Slomiak, what's going on?
We meet again.
Yes.
So we're here today looking for another extension for some unfortunately extenuating circumstances. Number one is that unfortunately Mr. Gaspar has had some very severe illnesses and he was not able to respond with additional comments. I did finally work with him to get some comments over and we have a response from the town engineer now that I talked to him again today. He believes by Monday he can have the responses and it sounds like there's actually just a miscommunication in some of the information, more than anything, to be honest.
Yeah, I mean, I'll have, sorry if I might go elaborate, but I gather there is, it's not as extensive as one would think.
Yeah, like, just to give an example, if you actually, like, there's one comment he made about the height of the, if you remember, there's a retaining wall down below. If you actually measure the retaining wall, it's six feet, but design drawings, it's six and a half feet. That's because it goes an extra half foot down.
Right, right.
So there's like minor things that like don't actually, at least from my engineer's perspective, I'm not an engineer, but number one, don't really affect the project itself, but a technicality that they just need to kind of work out together sort of thing. And even in his comments back, he said that all the calculations seem to meet the requirements for the work that needs to be done. So unfortunately, due to those health issues and extensive periods of time in the hospital, which is, you know, his personal business. When we got to the point where we thought we could actually be comfortable and having some conversations with Mr. Noack and as well as my engineer, it was suggested that as we get into these weather patterns where we start getting cold at night and freezing at night, but then warming up during the day, it actually can cause some issues that we don't, we don't want.
That's true.
Right? We want safety. That's the number one concern, right? I've said that from day one. This has never been a project about doing something against anyone else, it's just on our property, but safety of the other wall and the other properties has always been, and I've said it from day one, our number one concern. We don't want anyone ever getting hurt, we don't want any issues ever happening. So two different people that know it way better than me suggesting that if this was done after the winter, when the temperatures warm up and you know you have consistent temperatures, that it would be much more of a safer project. That's why I went ahead and submitted this.
Yeah.
For extension, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, how much time is allowable? We can give an extension for 180 days?
Yeah, and the planning board also has the inherent authority to grant.
We can grant up to a year, right?
Extensions, actually indefinitely.
You know, giving the extension through March, it doesn't serve any good.
I agree.
Because we are in a winter weather, they're gonna be right back for us. I suggest we give it right through the end of September.
I agree.
And.
That's what we're hoping for.
And I hope everything works well and you don't have to come back.
Yeah, so we're hoping to do it as soon as the conditions are appropriate.
I would give a large extension, it just, it doesn't make sense to coming back every three months.
Yeah, I mean, I.
The reasons are valid, we can do it.
Well, the answer will be the same, if he comes back in March.
Well, that's it, it's just a waste, it's just a waste of time.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
Right.
Well, right, because by March.
Push it to the end of September and God willing, they can get it done.
They're still hard.
Right.
Even in March, and if the weather can, if it's, we've had April snow, so, and weather can, this weather is so ridic, you can't bank on what we're gonna get.
You're not gonna do any construction until May, June.
Right, so the way, and again, I'm not an engineer, I never claimed to be an engineer, but the way Jeff, Mr. Gaspar was explaining to me is that the ground has to be compacted to a certain level and.
And you cannot do it when it's frozen.
If it's too hard from the cold, we'll never know if we actually got to the right.
Well, and you need some consistency.
That's right.
No, you cannot do it when it's frozen.
So I think, Matt, what do you think?
I agree. I think it'd be silly not to grant it.
Okay. I, so I guess another, it would be whatever the six months is, I think they're asking for until March 31.
I asked.
I'd go beyond that.
Another six months.
I go September 30.
I asked.
I go September 30.
September 30.
That's fine.
And that's what I asked for.
That's fine. Okay, and you've seen the conditions in the resolution, which should be familiar?
They were the original.
Yeah.
The original conditions, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
I think there were some additions from the engineer's report, I think they were included there.
Yeah, I, all right, okay. All right. Let's review the resolution, particularly the conditions, just so that everyone is on the same page.
An approval of a request for an extension of the steep slopes permit for property at Nine High Point Circle. Whereas property owners Seth and Eleanor Slomiak submitted a request dated November 19th, 2023 to the Village of Rybrook Planning Board for an extension of the steep slopes permit approval issued by the Planning Board on October 14th, 2021, excuse me. Whereas if further condition, if further extensions are to be approved in the discretion of the Planning Board, such extensions may consider the applicant's compliance with the following comments and recommendations raised in the memorandum of James Natarelli, P.E. of Dolph Rotfeld Engineering dated December 5th, 2023, including but not limited to. You want me to read all of those conditions?
We've read them.
Yeah.
I read James, I, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I read James' letter, I know where they are.
Okay. Conditions labeled A through G.
Okay.
Again, it's just incorporating the engineer's letter.
All right.
Be it further resolved that the Planning Board of the Village of Rybrook hereby approves additional extensions of the steep slopes permit which shall be applied beginning January 1st, 2024, effective through September 30th, 2024, based upon the good cause shown and the explanations provided by the applicant.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion to be had on this, rolling? Okay, let's have a motion in a second to adopt.
So move it. Second.
Mr. Grzan.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Retner.
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Schoen.
Yes.
Yes. Chairman Goodman.
Yes.
Yes. Four yeses.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, happy new year.
Happy holidays to you.
Thank you so much.
Take care. That's about the shortest meeting on record.
Yes. Yes. Actually has some shrug. I did want to chat just for a bit about our comprehensive plan issue. I know everyone is rolling their eyes on that.
I'm clocking your minute now.
Clocking my minute. Rob is circulated to me and Sarah sort of a draft of a report, but I don't think it's ready yet. I want to have a little more time to think about it and a more time for Rob and Sarah to get their heads together on it. We sort of didn't get around to looking at this until more recently than we would have liked, but I wanted to just give you just sort of, sort of an indication as to what I'm thinking about with this. I think the consensus, I think the last meeting was a really interesting meeting. You guys turned me about 180 degrees on this, which is things that we do in our job, right? The consensus seems to be that the.
Oh, you're getting tired of us.
You do wear me down, but it's okay, I'll give you that.
That's our job.
I think the consensus is from the board that the comprehensive plan that was enacted.
Speak into the mic, because they can't hear us, guaranteed.
Right, whoever is watching us here. The comprehensive plan that was enacted, what, back in 2014?
Yeah.
Is a very good plan. It's detailed, it's precise, it has recommendations that you can get your head around. The problem is not that we need a new comprehensive plan, is that we need to be able to track the recommendations of the initial plan. And this is sort of where I think we sort of fell short. And it was one of the comments that Sarah's colleague Neil made that sort of struck me on this, because he said that when he was, he was dealing with Maranek, he sort of left them with a checklist of things for them to follow up on, to see, to make sure that they were holding to the plan and that years later they would be able to track whether the plan's objectives have been achieved or not. And this is where I think we had a problem, a methodological problem, because the, there was no like, like standard operating procedures implemented by the village to track some of these planned variables. And as a result, when we basically gave ourselves the job of evaluating the comprehensive plan, we were all over the place as to how to analyze it and whether or not objectives have been achieved. So the general recommendations is, one, to keep the comprehensive plan that we have as sort of the subject of interest here. Think about ways of going, if you take the summary of the recommendations, some of those recommendations have been achieved and some of those recommendations have not been achieved. And I think that maybe it makes sense to have a small group of people outside of board meetings, maybe a task force, just go through those recommendations, figure out which ones have been achieved, and for those that have not been, figure out how they should be maybe implemented, whether there are things that have already been done, things that have already been done would be vetted out. But there were, there was like one, I, sort of like, there was, like an example I was thinking about here was summary plan recommendation, land use and zoning in the second bullet point, that a review of the C1 and C1P zoning districts be modified to increase three to four-story mixed-use developments. But there's no evidence that there was anyone following up on that. I mean, no one looked at whether or not that was, that actually was feasible to do. So we may need to take a step back, take these recommendations, maybe task force those that we think are priority, and follow through with them. And so that's sort of like the sense, the sense that, that, sort of the spirit, I think, of the recommendations that I'm sort of thinking about. And we'll work on it, we'll circulate something for you next month, and in the meantime, whatever comments you have.
When I first started to look at it again, that's exactly how I approached it. I took the first chapter, I did exactly what Neil said, and Chapter 13, and went to what I perceived the recommendations were, and just started to make my notes, yes and why yes, no and why partially, you know, this is the way I was responding, because that's what I thought we were gonna do. I never once thought we were gonna rewrite, that was my interpretation of what we were supposed to do. I think that's the right way to go about it, because the document is a solid, solid document. It is a very well-written, very easy to follow mission statement for ever. I think.
And there are just some things, I think there are, there may be some recommendations that will require the input of professionals as to whether or not they actually have been implemented. They may have been implemented and we just don't know it, or if they have been thought about, maybe there are issues that have arisen that caused, you know, the Board of Trustees are professionals to say, no, that may not be the way to go. So there's just a, I think, a communication disconnect on this plan where we have it as a great starting point, as a great guide, but then, you know, where do we go from there? How do we track through the recommendations to, you know, and Sarah, I think, you know, we talked about this and I think you're, you sort of agree with Amy's approach as well.
Rob, I agree with everything with the approach. I still think that 10 years, it's a short time, but it's a relatively long time. Are there any changes that have taken place within the village, demographic, physical, financial, whatever, that could impact, or could we adjust the sections of the comprehensive plan to kind of reflect the changes that may have taken with the village? For example, three hotels have disappeared.
Right, right.
When the plan was drafted and prepared and issued, the hotels were very much viable entities within the village. So is there anything within the plan that would make us revise or, you know, those particular sections?
I think that's part of the process, too. I think, I think one is to figure out what it recommends that we haven't followed up on and to make sure that those recommendations are followed through. And the other is to identify things that have gone on that change, that either the plan did not address, like what's going on in development here. And also, I mean, I think last time, I think it would be good to get an updated demographic study of the village. I think that would be really helpful.
I think everybody agreed on that.
You know, I don't think there was an issue with that, but I think that would be part of our recommendation, too. And I think that actually could help us identify, because the plan, the plan as enacted was based on a whole demographic study done back in 2010, 2011. There are questions that I have about whether or not the demographics have changed, you know, at all, one way or another, even something as simple as the issue of how many schoolchildren we have, was not something that we could come to a conclusion on. So I think all that is really important, I think that's in the mix. So I think contrary to what I would have ideally liked, which would have been sort of a series of very concrete, you know, recommendations of the Board of Trustees, I think it's gonna be more of sort of conceptual recommendations with a follow-up of maybe putting together, you know, more concrete.
That demographic data, if I'm not mistaken, usually comes from the census.
John, speak into the microphone.
When is the next census? I mean, other.
There was one that just came in 2020.
Well, then we can extract, then we can extract.
It's there, yeah.
Yeah, we can extract the data rather than do the separate survey, you know.
No, no, it's there.
Oh, no, no, no. It's all there.
Then that's easy to do that.
It's all there, it's just someone has to put it in a form that's just accessible to us, but I think that would be, makes sense, so. Anyway, I don't have anything further.
No, I think that's a good idea.
Sounds good.
All right, guys. Yeah, oh, yes. David, please.
Just a very brief update on 900 King.
Could you please speak? Okay, all right.
The microphone? Okay. We are gonna be meeting with developer this coming week.
Say, I'm sorry, I can't.
We're meeting with the developer this coming week in the hopes of convincing him to agree on a pilot.
Are you and the school board any closer to resolution between the two boards on the pilot?
No, they're apart. I, it's, they are inscrutable, the school board. Just when you think you understand what their problem is, you realize you have no clue.
Wow.
They want all the money front-loaded because they need cash to redo their athletic fields. The trouble is, the developer's not gonna wanna give them the money upfront because that's when he has no revenue. And I think they were hinting at, well, maybe the village would waive its share of the tax revenue and we're going, no, that won't happen. And so I'm not sure if we can ever get everybody on board. I wish I could say our side was united and then it's just a question for developer.
Just for my information, those, when there is the fact that the village board is the approval authority on this, can you folks go on your own even though you may not be in a complete agreement with the school board on the magnitude and in the form of the pilot?
I don't know the answer.
Yeah.
There has been some conjecture, but I don't know.
Okay, I got you.
Legal opinion, yes.
Yeah. That's, this is about the fields?
This is all about trying to get the school board to agree to the same pilot that we're prepared to agree to.
On what?
Taxes.
Oh, for 900 King? Oh, I didn't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, 900 King. Hmm, interesting.
I don't think they, I don't think they understand that there is a major difference between government and school government. And methodology.
And now I am engaging speculation. I think they are facing political pressure from the residents.
You bet.
Because normally you would say, well, why don't you just bond, bond it up?
Oh, no.
Another, another bond?
No.
Is that what the residents will approve?
I just, I just. No, because, because we're, they stretch the residents' goodwill to the breaking point. The taxes are ridiculous now. Because of the position that the residents were put in and were kind enough to vote for it and not say no, again.
But their fields apparently are sufficiently decrepit that they are a danger.
Well, they need to get creative financial people. I thought they had a financial committee.
I don't know. That's getting far more usual than I.
It seems that it's not, it used to work pretty well. I don't, I'm not sure I understand, maybe I'm wrong.
I don't know. I finally have the children that use the fields and I look at the facilities now compared when my children were there and I said, wow.
Yeah, you said it.
These fields are magnificent, you know, you look at the high school fields, it's like a university for gossip.
They're greedy.
I don't know the answer.
They're so.
All I can say is they want, they need to redo the fields and I can't explain why.
Wow.
I don't know the, I'm not trying to keep anything from you, but I don't know the answer and.
It's probably the turf that needs doing.
The budget of a financial dilemma.
Sometimes you have to do things within the budget.
Right.
You budget things and do it within the budget. You can't just go out and throw the budget.
We can control the villages, but we can't control.
No. And sometimes they, the word no has to be there.
Well, I mean, look, this is.
You can't say yes to everything.
This is, this is gonna be, you know, this is an emerging real problem. I mean, look at even in my household, my wife and I are talking about staying in the village, we just got our tax bill like John and.
Everybody I know is talking about it.
And the folks, I don't have to tell you what is going on.
I just wanted to bring you guys up to date.
Yeah, okay.
So that you would understand, since this is a major thing that's going on.
Would you be running into the same problem with the development that's coming up now?
That is so far removed from.
I see.
Concept of a pilot at this point in time that we're not even thinking about.
Yeah.
All we're worried about is trying to get 900. We just want them to get started. What we've told the school board is if they had approved what we proposed two years ago, they'd already be getting tons of money.
You gotta move on it, everybody's losing, we are losing, the developer's losing, everybody's losing.
Two years ago, they were in such a mess and had made such a mess that they couldn't see beyond the bond and the reconstruction and what was going on then.
Bottom line is though, that they dragged their feet.
Yeah.
Now it's two years from now and what we've tried to hinder them is, you don't want to drag their feet for another two years, because you're losing money every year we don't have a pilot.
Not only that, but if you look from the builder's perspective, what interest rates, how they changed over the, over the two-year period.
Costs have gone up.
Yes.
We'd already be in the third year of the pilot, of an eight-year pilot, if we had done this two years ago. eight-year pilot, if we had done this two years ago.
Yeah, anyway, it's a discussion.
It's just nonstop, but luckily they paid me a huge salary for my.
May I have your salary? All right, let's adjourn.
All together?
Yes, I.
Hi.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, everybody.